All right, good evening. We're gonna call the meeting of the Kansas City Public School Board of Directors to order now. June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Barca.
Present.
Ms. Buckner.
Here.
Ms. Cortez.
Here.
Ms. Ford.
Here.
Dr. Jones.
Present.
Ms. Wolf C.
Here.
Mr. Hogan.
Here, thank you. And oh, by the way, hello, good evening and welcome. So, can I have a motion to amend the agenda to remove item number thirty-five from the consent agenda as the district is still working out the details? And that is?
Item number one.
Oh, we've moved it around now?
Yeah.
Apologies.
Number one.
Okay, it's item number one from the consent agenda as the district continues to work out details there.
Some of?
Second.
All right, so it's been moved in seconded. June, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Ford.
Yes.
Dr. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Wolf C.
Yes.
Mr. Hogan.
Yes, the motion is passed and the agenda is approved. All right, so we'll move right into public comment. So we'll welcome Ms., I'm gonna say Keisha, it might be Keisha, Hood to the podium. So how bad did I butcher your first name?
It was correct. The second time, it's Keisha.
Keisha, okay, perfect. Ms. Hood, welcome, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Keisha Hood and I am a three-time Paseo parent, graduates of twenty sixteen nineteen, and my last two will graduate in twenty twenty-four, and I do thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I come with concerns about the current and future of Paseo Academy. At one point, Paseo was a very welcoming school overflowing with an air transparency, acceptance, and a feel of unity that included leadership, staff, family, and community. Everyone was on the same page with the same want, and that was to produce well-rounded individuals upon graduation. The open door policy was not just words, it was real. You could take your concerns and worries at any time, and those issues would be addressed to the point of solution. Seventy-five percent of the information I received during last year's school, I got from my student, and I believe it should have came from the leadership. There is in place a very capable SAC committee, a group of parents and community leaders who find it very difficult to feel included in the education process because of the attitude of the leadership. It also appears from the outside, because Paseo no longer has an open door policy, that if staff questions the direction of leadership, it is taken that they are no longer part of the Paseo staff, specifically the arts coordinator, Mr. Peacock. How can an arts school not have an arts coordinator, especially one who walked the halls and encouraged and supported our students in their chosen art form? The parent and community involvement assistant, Mr. Melvin Brown. Mr. Brown was a key and a needed part in the education of Paseo students. His resources were very vast, all-inclusive, and very much needed, and that's just to name a few. I am a firm believer that it takes a combination of things to help our students be successful individuals. It takes family, school, and community working together to make sure that our students are educated, but that they are also physically and mentally prepared for what is to come after high school. There was a staff in place that was doing just that, trusting and working together with family and community to make sure our students are ready for life. That is no longer the case, and I do believe that the disconnect begins with the leadership, and that's Dr. Patricia Hayes. Finally, I know that everyone cannot be pleased in all scenarios, but if the head is not utilizing and respecting those parts that help the body move forward, then it's time for a change. I thank you so much for all you do for our students and schools and for the time to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hood. All right, I'll now call Ms. Lasagna Burnett to the podium. Ms. Burnett, thank you for coming, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, as was stated, my name is Lasagna Burnett. I am a sophomore parent at Paseo Academy, and also currently the SAC secretary. I've been with Paseo for the past three, going on four years now, and I want to continue at Paseo until my daughter walks across that stage in twenty twenty-four. Tonight I stand before you, want answers to mine and several other parents' questions. Where is our school headed to? Why are so many of our administrators that are at the school, why are they leaving? Why does our principal feel the need that is okay to disrespect not only us parents, but the fellow staff members? When my daughter first started at Paseo Academy, we had an arts coordinator, we had an arts coordinator, Mr. Peacock. Now mysteriously, his position has been removed, and we no longer have an arts coordinator, but we are performing art school. How does that make any sense? We have several other staff members let go, removed, or position taken away. Mr. Melvin Brown, our parent liaison, he's gone. One of our assistant principals, Mr. Green, he's gone. One of my daughter's favorite teachers, who was her support system from seventh grade all the way up until her last year, which was her ninth grade year, Ms. Williams, Crystal Williams, she's gone. What's going on? Why are we missing so many administrators? This is ridiculous. Our principal just flat-out disrespects us, staff, and nothing is being done about it so far. We would like answers, and we would like to know what's going on. As far as where is our school headed to, we're scared that our school is going to turn into a neighborhood school, and that's something we do not want. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burnett. All right, I'll call Alicia Black Mackey to the podium. It might be Alicia, apologies if it is. Good evening, you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, everyone. As you stated, I am Alicia Black Mackey, and I am a parent of two Paseo Pirates, and I, and I, and they have, my son, who is fifteen, he has been attending Paseo since seventh grade, and my daughter, she just started Paseo Academy this year. My, and I've had some concerns about Paseo Academy, about the changes that is going on. First, first, we are wondering, as parents and as other parents, where is Paseo heading? We're not sure what's going on, a whole bunch of things are happening, and we're not understanding of it. Also, secondly, I serve as the vice chair of the SAC committee, and I really feel that I have been disrespected as a SAC, as a parent first, and as a SAC member. Thirdly, I, during COVID, the COVID situation, when we was returning to school, I have been down to the Board of Ed, down calling transportation and trying to figure out to have transportation for my daughter. Nothing has been rectified, and now, as we are entering a new school year, which is next, which is start, which is next month, as of tomorrow, I would like to know, will my daughter have a bus? What is going on? Because I am a working parent, and I work in another school district, and if worse comes to worse, I, I do not want to, but I may have to pull my children out and have them come with me to the school, to, to, to the school district where I work at. Also, there has been an influx or a big turnaround of excellent, excellent adminis-, excellent teachers that have gone. One as my son's English teacher, Ms. Crystal Williams. Also, the performing arts coordinator, Mr. Peacock. Also, Dr. Green. Also, the one, another vice principal that just came, and then he just left, Mr. Holland. I'm trying to figure out what is going on. And as a parent, I feel that we have a voice in our children's education, and if we do not, I, I am very upset to see where Paseo is heading. I have the feeling and I have the fear that it's gonna turn into a neighborhood school, and my children have not. And my children have worked hard to come into Paseo. They love Paseo, and I feel that they can thrive. If the head is not right, then the tail is not right. Something just needs to be done. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Black Mackey. All right, I'll welcome Mr. Tom Love to the podium. Hello, Mr. Love, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, it's good to be here tonight. It's very important for school board members to take into account that when you swear to become, you know, become a school board member, you swear that you're going to uphold the laws in Missouri, and we have a law that I believe is currently being broken, and that is, we're automatically, looks to me like we're automatically promoting five-year-olds into first grade. Legally, you have to be at least six by August the first in Missouri, and unfortunately, someone made a mistake in the law years ago, and they allowed cities with populations over three hundred thousand to begin five-year-olds in, I mean, four-year-olds into kindergarten, with the condition that they had to, they had to complete kindergarten. Well, we had ninety-eight children, and every one of them were promoted to first grade. Ninety-eight, a hundred percent. Several years ago, the school district looked at the number of children entering kindergarten, and how far, what was the deficit? What was the gap? Well, they found that forty percent of the children entering kindergarten were eleven months behind. Eleven months. Now, we were attempting to basically graduate about forty percent of the students at age seventeen. The reason this is critical, the state law doesn't have a screening process in the law for kindergarten, but the school district, you guys can go ahead and implement that. So we screened children entering kindergarten and closed the gap. Under state law, we currently have, and I talked to the guy about it, isn't it, up in Jeff City, to allow five-year-olds to be placed into the pre-K program, which is the perfect place to have children, place them in the pre-K, screen them as they come into kindergarten this summer, and say, hey, they need to be placed into kindergarten. And generally, it's boys. Boys are six months developmentally younger than girls. If you, if you know someone with boys and girls, you'll, you'll find out that the girls walk before the boys walk. It's critical that the kindergarten teachers have some say-so, but this automatic promotion, these children are literally gonna be promoted, if it continues, they're gonna be going into second grade when they should be entering first grade. Think about that. That's kind of a, a type of child abuse to, to allow these children, that we know that are not ready, to suffer and fail, and yet still get promoted, when all you have to do is get the foundation correct in kindergarten. We can also do a transition kindergarten if we want to, and, and let those, let the children that are screened, these summer birthdays generally, May, June, and July, and let them be screened, and they can still graduate when they're eighteen with their peers. But you guys can put that process in and dramatically improve the morale of the kindergarten and first-grade teachers who know this early childhood reasoning behind this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Love, and thank you to everyone who came up for public comment tonight. All right, we will transition into the Board of Directors' report, starting with our treasurer, Mr. Manny Abarka, with the Board Treasurer's report.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry, I wasn't necessarily waiting for that, but sure, good to see you all, it's been such a long time. All right, starting off, looking at the summary of revenue expenditure and fund balance, we show a current three-point-six million in operating expenses over net revenues at this point, however, this number is not final, as we work through getting the financials into full accrual reporting. The capital projects fund, we will spend roughly four to five million more than revenues as planned, in order to use the beginning balances in that fund for project work in our buildings. Looking at our local revenues here, we expect our final local revenue to be very close to budget, although we show it here as five-point-five million under budget. Local property taxes are at budget due to a six-point-five million dollar reduction in those budgets last month and collection of one-point-nine million in protest at two-thousand twenty-one property taxes. Sales tax from Proposition C revenue shows that we are two-point-eight million under budget, however, we have May and June to collect and expect to be on budget for that line as we close out the year. Looking at county and state revenues, the county stock insurance revenue for twenty twenty-one is not received until August, however, we expect it to be close to budget when received. Looking at our state basic formula revenue, we will be an estimated five-hundred-thousand dollar over budget, and we make the final payment to charters under our voluntary MOU. Looking at federal revenues, we are currently twenty-one million under budget on federal revenues, however, this number will change significantly as we close out the year end. Federal program dollars must be spent before claims, so there will be several drawdowns made as we close out our year-end financials. Looking at our pie chart, nothing much has changed from previous months here. Shows us that seventy-five percent of our total revenues comes from local sources and twenty-two percent from federal sources. So please, for all those listening in the public, make sure you pay your property taxes on time, so that we can make sure and get our kids the resources they need. But this is higher than normal due to CARES Act and ESTER funds for this year. Looking at salaries and benefits, as we get close to making final payouts for the twenty-twenty-one earned salaries and benefits, we are trailing under budget, however, expect to be close to budget here soon. Looking at capital projects and debt services. All right, several, oh, I'm sorry, I skipped some lines. Service and supply expenditures, thanks Linda for keeping me on track there. We continue to see several lines here below budget due to not being in person for much of the school year. Some major lines that will be under budget include sixty-three-eleven purchase instructional services, sixty-three-forty-one contracted people transportation, sixty-three-ninety-one other purchase services, sixty-four-twelve technology supplies, and sixty-four-seventy-one, which is food supplies. So again, just because we were not in school for the full year, this is why you'll see these lines under budget there. Now, moving on to capital projects and debt payments. Several capital project budgets will roll into next year as projects continue. Debt payments are at budget as they have been completed for the year. Looking at our expenditure chart, again, not too much has changed here, shows us that sixty-four percent of the total budget is salaries and benefits, with twenty percent being for outside professional services such as transportation. Looking at our next slides here, these are our investment slides showing our planned cash maturities on pay dates through November thirtieth, as we begin to receive tax revenues in December to support ongoing expenditures for the year. Again, you'll see these investments are made because we get large cash dumps, and we must make investments to ensure that we have cash flow for the remainder of the year. Finally, the report is preliminary for June thirtieth until the final financial statements and audit works are complete. So with that, open for questions.
Any questions for Mr. Barca?
No hard ones.
Any softball questions for Mr. Barca? No. All right, thank you, sir. All right, and we'll transition into the Board Chair Report, and I just wanted to make a quick public comment. Over the last three months, I've had three different, three different people, two of which representing organizations, approach me about this new board, stressing their concerns with this board, and really curious about whether or not we were functioning well together. And I just want to make this abundantly clear, that, that yes, we are working really well together. On June twenty-sixth, we held our first board retreat where we spent time, intentional time, doing some team building, trust-building exercises. We will continue to be intentional about that going forward as well. This is a board who I believe is already high-functioning, but just like any team that comes together, you go through different stages to get to that high-performing state. We will continue to work really, really, again, intentionally on that. I want to specifically call out both, you know, Ms. Ford and Ms. Buckner, they've added tremendous value right out of the gate. They're asking great questions, they're getting up to speed, they're asking hard questions, they're coming with new and fresh ideas, exactly what you would want a new team member to do in your daily job, just as we would expect that from them here. So I want to make sure that everyone understands that we've struggled for decades in this district, dealing with a whole bunch of negative narratives that are out in this community, right? At some point, and Dr. Bedell is always calling this community to task, we can't do this on our own, at some point, you want the community to sort of wrap ourselves around this district and stop the false narrative, whether it's for intentional reasons to undermine or discredit this district, or if it's unintentionally. We all have a responsibility to, to speak the facts as we know them, and if we don't know them, we shouldn't be speaking about them at all. And so I just wanted to just make it abundantly clear, I feel like this board is, is really focused on the same thing, which is making sure that the fourteen thousand-plus kids in our district are getting the, the things that they need to be successful in life. And so I'm, we're all, I think all of us would agree that if you want to come up and hold us accountable with very specific things, please do so. That's, we, we welcome that, you should be doing that as part of your responsibility as a community as well, but I just, you know, you keep hearing the same old stale narrative, and it just sort of gets old. And so I just wanted to make that comment, and happy to open it up for any additional comments or questions from my fellow board members. Okay, well, with that being said, we'll move on to our ad hoc committee report, and I think Ms. Cortez is gonna talk about the finance committee and maybe the Ed Foundation as well.
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of notes, the finance committee met this morning, thank you to Ms. Quinley and her team, and to Dr. Collier for your time this morning. Really, the things that we're focused on, I'm just gonna hit two quick highlights. One is potential refinance of some capital operating leases, lease debt that will come before the board next month likely, and we had really good dialogue about those, that that potential refinance and the benefits. And we had really good dialogue about those, that potential refinance and the benefits that will result in additional funds coming back into our operating budget as a result. So that's positive news. The second thing that we're really focused on and that we would ask the community's engagement on is how we can better engage the community on a year-round basis in learning about and sharing thoughts about our budgeting process. So we will be discussing in our next finance meeting how we can work with all of the aspects of the district, but really reach out to the community and do some exercises in the fall and the winter to help people understand the decisions that sit in front of the district and the board as we move through the school year and planning for the following year. And we'd really encourage your participation and for you to stay aware of the things that we really need input on. So that process will be taking place. Okay, excuse me, I have to get my notes back up here. With regard to the Ed Foundation, the Kansas City Public Schools Education Foundation is hosting Summer Fest for our returning students. Summer Fest will be on August fourteenth from ten a.m. to three p.m. at East High School. We would strongly encourage everyone to participate. We'll be partnering with KCPS and the public health providers to ensure that our students are ready to engage in learning when classes start on August twenty-third. By preregistering for this event at our, at the KCPS website, KCPS students will be able to get a backpack with school supplies free of charge, immunization, COVID-19 vaccines, lead testing, and other student health services will also be available on-site. Please, please, please encourage everyone you know who's coming back to school this fall to participate and to preregister for this event. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cortez. Any questions? All right, good information there, and we will transition over to our Superintendent's Report, and we've got our Deputy Superintendent, Dr. Collier, here, who is going to do her best to make sure Dr. Bedell does not come back.
Not true at all, you all, not true. Don't take that back to Dr. Bedell.
And the media is here. I'm joking, I'm joking.
All right, thank you, Board Chair Hogan. At this time, the first item under the Superintendent's Report is our video highlight. It's entitled, "We Are KCPS," and it's one of the videos that we will be sharing at the upcoming enrollment fair that's going to highlight our KCPS students. And just FYI, our enrollment fair is July twenty-sixth through the thirty-first, and so we encourage you to come out, enroll your children, and folks that you know that have children, tell them about it. We love to have them there. There's going to be a lot of great information shared and a lot of support around enrollment, so we'd love to see you there. So at this time, we'll have that video highlight.
From the first day of pre-K to walking across the stage at graduation, we are KCPS. Kansas City Public Schools is a system designed to provide a quality education that prepares all of our students, regardless of background or circumstances, for success in college, career, and life. We are a system that will produce scholars who are high-achieving critical thinkers, prepared to succeed in a constantly-changing world, and engaged in the improvement of their communities. We are accomplishing these goals by providing teachers with the appropriate training, resources, and support they need to develop the whole child. We are building a foundation of academic success in our thirty-five school buildings. We are serving a diverse population of about fifteen thousand students. We are providing support for students who speak more than fifty different languages. We are focusing on equitable practices to meet the physical, social, and emotional needs of all students, and we are unmatched when it comes to the variety of educational opportunities KCPS offers in the classroom. Those include Montessori, foreign language, dual language, African-centered education, career technical education, performing arts, and college prep. As the fourteenth-largest school district out of the five-hundred-and-eighteenth districts in Missouri, we are full of unprecedented amenities at all of our facilities. According to the Kansas City Economic Development Corporation, we are one of the top twenty major employers in the area. More than twenty-five-hundred people work for the district, more than eleven-hundred are teachers. We are committed to making this work experience exciting and fun with events like convocation, Summer Fest, the Teacher of the Year Ceremony, KCPS Rocks, and staff intramurals. From the schools to the programs, the individual supports, and the teachers who change lives daily, we are KCPS simply means we are the system that collectively works together to guide all students to future success.
Special thanks to our communications team, who always do an awesome job of really capturing the great things that are happening in our schools. This is just one of the videos, but it's always awesome. Thank you. At this time, we'll move on to our COVID-nineteen update, and I'm going to call forward two folks, I like to call them our COVID-nineteen mitigation champions, and that's Sarah Williams and Lauren Grimes. It looks like Sarah is going to be representing the dynamic duo this evening. And as you all know, as we were thrust into navigating COVID-19, these two ladies truly led the way for us as a district. They did a phenomenal job of providing the research and getting out there, collaborating with Health Department and other organizations to help us best meet the needs of our staff and our students during that challenging time. So at this time, Sarah is going to walk us through some of recent recommendations and then also some of our mitigation strategies that we'll be looking to implement in the fall.
Thank you, Dr. Collier. Thank you, Board, for having me tonight. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. Thank you, members of the public. Thank you, fellow coworkers, for all wearing your masks tonight. I really appreciate it, because we all know we're in an upsurge with the Delta variant, right? So we want to do everything we can to keep students, staff, families, community safe, so that way we are fully open on the date we're going to be fully open, because we will be fully open. So I just wanted to go through just some, some full, some recommendations that are being made right now from our community health partners. These were just made on seven-sixteen. As you know, the American Association of Pediatrics and the CDC right now are having a little tussle with masking in schools, right? Our Health Department is recommending to us and our community health partners that we go ahead and we universally mask at our school sites. I will tell you that that will ultimately be my recommendation, once we get a chance to talk with Cabinet and then, and then again, present to Board. We talked to several, several folks, several of our community health partners, and really feel like this is going to be the best way for us to go. This is a slide with a lot of words, okay? So I don't expect everyone to read completely through it, but it really goes through those key takeaways that the CDC gave us in their guidance for us in opening schools. And the better slide to me is this one, okay? These are our mitigation strategies in a nutshell. I know it looks like Swiss cheese, but it really is a thing that's going to keep us open and safe, and that is all of our mitigation strategies working together to keep us safe. So we're going to be talking about physical distancing to the extent possible. Our main form of protection is going to be our mask in the school settings, our ventilation systems, our avoiding touching our face like I just did, hand washing, all those things that we know we need to do that we were doing at the end of the year, which made us successful in our hybrid reopening. We're going to continue to be successful in our full reopening and be implementing these strategies. I know that there were some questions that had come up around COVID testing protocols at the school sites. We have opportunity right now for Bionax Now testing that's been supplied to us through the state of Missouri. We currently use that a lot, and so, and we're getting those results and then informing people if they need to quarantine or isolate based on the test result. And we have surveillance testing through our wonderful community partners in Children's Mercy Hospital and through True North Pharmacy. We will also be onboarding DSI COVID-19 testing. They call it a surveillance testing protocol, and I know that word sounds a little scary, but that's just what it's called in the medical profession. I've fought it for a little bit, but I've decided, you know what? I'm just going to adopt it, because I think it confuses things when you label something different than what the medical professionals have labeled it, right? So I'm just going to call it what it is, and it's surveillance testing. So what we need to do with that is get input and buy-in from our parents and permission for their kids to participate in that program. That will be a protocol that will allow us to test students that have permission to be tested on a randomized basis. And then that'll tell us what our, what our COVID, what would you call it, our COVID count is at that particular school, for lack of a better word. And then we can take, you know, the precautions that we need to, to make sure that students, families, staff, everyone around us is safe based on those testing results. Vaccine, and I'm glad Board Member Cortez that you brought up about the summer enrollment fair, and I will certainly add that to our protocol at that testing, I'm sorry, that that vaccine will be available to, at the summer fair. I know that we're going to have it available at the enrollment fair. We're in process of working with Kansas City Health Department, Nurse Grimes is, to set dates for vaccine clinics back at our schools for students and families. Right now, right down the street, Kansas City Health Department is offering walk-in vaccines for anybody who would like to help us keep open and stay open when we come back to school. Vaccine is going to be critical to our success in being able to do so. We will still be requesting that staff and students provide a copy of their vaccine card. This assists us tremendously in our quarantine and isolation and our contact tracing activities, because as you all know with the CDC, there are different guidelines for who needs to quarantine based on whether they're vaccinated or not, if they, if they have an exposure. So notification will still go out to staff and families. Notification will go out directly to families or to parents if their student is directly affected by a COVID event, meaning if they need to quarantine, that parent's going to know immediately, because they're going to come pick the kiddo up from school, right? And we're also going to be sending notification to, as a generalized, hey, this happened at school, your kid was not directly affected, through email, text, and talking points. We will also be sending that information to staff so they're aware. So that way, just everyone knows we're looking out for each other. And that's, that to me, when I watched that video just now, I just thought, it just gave me all the feels, because, you know, we're really here about the kids, and we're just so glad to be back in person. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Ford, excuse me.
So I just want to make sure I'm clear. Right now, the plan is, as of today, in the fall, our plan is to return in person, wearing masks, regardless of if you're vaccinated or not.
Correct.
Okay, that's all.
And I just want to clarify, those are our hopes. That's what we're wanting to do, yes. We certainly want to bring our students back one-hundred percent. We're going to continue to watch, and we'll be bringing back our plan to the Board at the next meeting, as we have a little more time to assess the situation.
Mr. Abarka?
Can you remind folks again the importance of getting a vaccination and the ages of which you can get a vaccine for kids at this point? Because I think our media partners are here and would love to spread that message.
Sure, I'm happy, I'm happy to give that information, and Dr. Jones, if I need any help, I would really ask you to help me out, but.
I'm all.
But I can, I can tell you this, vaccine is available for anyone twelve and up who's otherwise eligible, health-wise. That's the Pfizer vaccine that's available for ages twelve and up. Moderna vaccine is available for ages eighteen and up. Those are both two-shot vaccines, so you go for Pfizer, you go for one shot, and then you go back, I think it's three weeks later, and get the second shot. For Moderna, you get the one shot, you go back four weeks later and get the second shot. And then there's the one-shot Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. All three are available right down the street at the Kansas City Health Department, any day on a walk-in basis.
Thank you. Ms. Wolfsee?
Could you go back to the testing slide, Ms. Williams, just so I can, and start with the surveillance question? So where you have the schools located, is it only at those schools that that type of testing is allowed or available?
No, good question, Board Member Wolfsee. It's available at all schools, and I should have clarified that more clearly in my slide. It's available at all schools. What I was trying to denote is we have at, for Children's Mercy, that's a program that they're doing, it's kind of a, part of a broader TLC testing protocol that is a little bit too in the weeds, but.
No, I remember that one. That's why I asked the question. So I think for the general public, what I wanted to make sure they understood, I believe that at Paseo, they had a note that went home to the parents that said, if you opted into the surveillance testing, it just means that that sort of randomized testing would be occurring in the school, and it's just a way for both the school and the district to keep a, an idea of how prevalent either COVID is or isn't in the school? Is that the idea?
That's, that's the main idea.
Okay.
The, the main idea is to make sure that we're keeping students, staff, families, community as safe as possible.
Okay.
And so that testing protocol especially, I mean, we're a large entity where people gather, right? So that gives the community then a good idea of what's going on as far as community spread. Now, we also take it a step further, and then we go ahead and we take the protocols we need to, to make sure that at that site, staff and students are safe. So someone would be quarantined or isolated, isolated based on that information as it comes back by the Kansas City Health Department, and, but we would make sure that they get their education in all those, and all those ways that they can still engage in learning.
Okay, and then the rapid antigen test, that's just the fast test that everybody can get, and that's at every single school?
That's at every single school. Yes, ma'am.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Ms. Williams? I think we're good then. Thank you, Ms. Williams. Appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Dr. Collier?
All right, thank you. The next item is a quick item I just want to address regarding signature school admissions So specifically, I just, tonight, I'm talking about Lincoln, but in general, there have been some adjustments made to signature school admissions, and part of the reason for this had to do with some of what was happening during COVID-19 and the elimination of testing and that sort of thing. So there were temporary changes, and I want to reiterate, there are temporary changes made to the admissions requirements due to COVID-19 and not being able to offer the Lincoln admission exams. So that testing requirement was waived for the twenty-one-twenty school year, the school year that's coming to now. It was waived for that. The GPA academic probation requirement was two-point-five, but it was changed for admissions only. It was not changed for probation. So that's been a question that people have been asking, if students, will they be able to remain at Lincoln if they have a two-point-five? And then there's no testing, without the testing requirement, the decision was made then to increase the GPA to three-point-oh in the core subjects, just in order to maintain the integrity of Lincoln admissions and to ensure that all students are set up for success. There wasn't a vote that was needed by the Board, however, the information was shared at a previous board meeting. And then the change was also shared by our Principal of Lincoln, who's here this evening, and she shared that with Lincoln parents at a meeting, and then it was also posted to the KCPS website. But if there are questions about these requirements, I encourage parents and folks who are interested to please reach out to our staff here, Mr. David Rand, who actually engaged parents and staff, many people, through a long process before these decisions were made, but he'd be happy to help walk you through and to explain some of the changes that have been made. Once again, they're temporary, and we will be coming back to revisit how we move forward with our admissions requirements for our signature schools.
Thank you, Dr. Collier. Ms. Buckner?
You're saying that a board vote was not required for this?
That is, that is correct.
Okay, so who was this decision made by?
It was made by administration and in conjunction with the feedback that we received from the larger committee. There were quite a few people on the, on the team that were meeting about signature schools, staff members. I believe we had parents on the committee. I don't know, Mr. Rand, do you want to? Um, I don't know, Mr. Rand, do you want to mention anything about that?
Specifically, specifically to the Lincoln requirements?
Well, just the, the signature school requirements, when we had those larger meetings where you're meeting with staff and everyone else about some of the changes that we um, had to the processes.
Yeah, that involved staff. We did not necessarily have community and and parents on that.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that then.
I, I think there needs to be some specificity around like what committee? Um, I, I think in the communication that we've received, it's like everybody that was kind of blindsided and with the misconception that this was made by one person. So if you could provide, like, what committee made the decision at what time and, you know?
Yeah, yeah. Um, we can prepare that um, to share in a Friday update because I, I don't want to speak to it and not have all the information, so um, I'm going to hold off, I'm going to refrain from trying to provide that answer right now because I don't want to give out inaccurate information.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Uh, thank you. I think one of the things that is important for us in the Friday update, but also for the community to understand is the um, some of the feedback or in, not necessarily feedback, but input as far as the impact that um, the use of testing typically, the impact that it would have on students not being able to access Lincoln, as well as then, of course, we didn't have access to that testing this particular year because of COVID. But the reasoning behind um, the 2.5 going to a 3.0, I think that's important for us to just understand. I, I, you know, I understand it's in core subjects. Lincoln is a college preparatory um curriculum. It, it does have quite a bit of rigor associated with it, and I think you had made mention in your um, comments about, you know, when you get into Lincoln, we want to make sure that students are able to stay at Lincoln and succeed there. And so if you could give us some of that background as well, I think that would be very helpful.
Yes, we, we will do that. We will provide that information and make sure that is shared with the public as well.
So Mrs. Ms. Ford?
To make sure I'm fully understanding, um, are we talking a large amount of students that were impacted negatively by this in, this increase or change?
Um, I, from what I understand, the answer is no, but I'm going to let Mr. Rand speak to that.
Okay. And who are those students is what I also want to know, like generally?
I don't know that off the top of my head.
Generally?
Uh, generally, uh, so at the high school, there were 12 students um, that had a GPA between 2.5 and 2.9. Of that 12, uh, there were several that had other issues, attendance or behavior, so it wasn't purely GPA. Uh, I can go back and get that exact number. At the middle school, it's even fewer, um, less than 10. And uh, both the middle school and the high school, just for clarification, have really been working with families. And so I know both campuses have been providing opportunities. If originally they didn't meet the GPA requirement, we helped that seed offer and uh, allowed families to turn in second semester grades. Um, we also went back to last year, pre-COVID, um, to look at those grades as well. So um, definitely been trying to be flexible and work with families.
All right, I think we're good on that one, Dr. Collier.
Okay. All right, so at this time, we will move forward with our marketing update, and that will be provided by our Chief Communications Officer, Ms. Kelly Waichel.
Good evening, Board. Thank you for the opportunity to present our marketing update this month, as we've been doing for the past several months to keep you informed about our progress. Um, as you can see here, we talk about the quality indicator 12.5 that overviews this goal in our strategic planning. One of the things we want to talk about is the history and previous context that you've been receiving as a board as we go through our marketing updates each month. These are the bullet points we want to talk about this month as it relates to what we've covered in the past couple of months. So we have talked about digital streaming and marketing campaigns that have been complete. This includes the summer school marketing campaign as well as our pre-K marketing campaign in process. Uh, we have an awareness component, we have a pandemic component, and we talked last month about the upward trend of applications for our P3 and P4 versus the same time last year. Uh, we're also working on signage and marketing collateral. One of the things I want to note for you, um, I think Ms. Cortez had a question last month about Emmanuel Operation Breakthrough specifically in some of the marketing advertising that we do with those partners. Um, we're really proud to report that of our s, um, 18 students at Emmanuel, uh, 18 or 16 are going to Carver next year, one's going to a charter and one's undecided. So we're gathering the bulk of those students to attend our KCPS schools. In the Operation Breakthrough Partnership, we have 16 currently at Phillips. 14 of those students are going onto kindergarten um, at, at Phillips. And 14 are staying, one that's undecided and one is out of district. So again, looking at those numbers to see how we can keep those partnerships on to matriculate into our kindergarten programs. All right, um, and the next thing that we're looking at is planning for next school year as well as our marketing partner. And I did add in this lower right-hand corner, it's very hard to read, but hopefully on your screens you can see it, we did just receive a Let's Talk giving us praise and um, positive comments about the pre-K marketing. Each student entering our kindergarten uh, level in KCPS received their own T-shirt and swag, and I wish I brought a sample of the T-shirt. This is a parent thanking us for that package that they've gotten, and we tweeted about it, that the package that they got to welcome their students to KCPS. I think the back of it says 2034, is that correct, Major Brooks? 2034 is kindergartners entering uh, KCPS this next year. Current status, so we're continuing our individual school marketing plans. You've had updates on these for the past several months, looking at samples from our elementary schools and high schools on those individual marketing plans that we made with our principals about from enrollment goals specifically by grade level and building. Uh, we're also currently working on marketing and recruiting tool, marketing recruitment toolkits, communications toolkits, family engagement toolkits, and partners' education toolkits. That's a lot of words right there, that's lots of toolkits. But these four sections are what we're working on our, with our principal institute and our teacher institute to really relay how we support our internal staff in communications, in marketing, in recruiting, and in partners' education and family engagement. So these are going to be kind of playbooks that we're presenting to each of these uh, individual principals and teachers to see how they can share in the work of marketing and customer service and family engagement for our community. Also, one of the things I wanted to note that we talked about um, over the past couple of weeks is we build in uh, data reviews with our principals on a monthly basis. So rather than keeping marketing and enrollment and recruiting separate conversations, we're going to start rolling those conversations into our monthly principal meetings to review marketing numbers, enrollment numbers, and recruitment numbers with our principals on a regular basis to make it more of a systemic approach versus a siloed approach that maybe just Dr. Bedell and I are talking with them um, about on a monthly basis. So again, what is the systemic approach to looking at enrollment numbers by school, by grade level? The next bullet point here talks about our marketing partner RFQ review and selection. Um, as we've been talking about, we do have our review this month of the new vendors who have submitted an RFQ, and we will select that vendor in August and bring it to you guys in August for approval. Additional current status here, uh, we're continuing to refine our marketing communications plan for 2122. This is a yearly process that we go through in our department and our team, and we're working on that through this week in our retreat. And again, refining based on input and feedback from these board meetings as well as what we're seeing in the data. Blueprint 2030, you're hearing a lot about engagement, staff engagement, community engagement around Blueprint 2030. These next few bullets really show you how we're attacking the community engagement over the next couple of months. Uh, for example, the enrollment fair, Summer Fest, back-to-school nights, orientations, teacher and principal institutes, and convocation. Making sure we're going to these events, going to our families to talk about Blueprint 2030, the five and 10-year long-range planning for KCPS. So we're really excited about, again, being in the community again, being in person, talking with our families at those back-to-school nights, orientations, again, where our families are. Uh, you'll hear Major Brooks talk a little bit here about the enrollment fair, starting next week, so we're exploring that event through marketing communications tools. The video you saw tonight will be on a loop playing for our families and guests who visit at the enrollment fair next week. And then convocation is one of our big internal events that we have for all of our staff. August 18th, it'll be a virtual event, and we're currently planning the agenda and lineup with some really fun surprises for our staff at that event in August. These documents I gave you on the dais so you can see, because they're very small on the screen, I wanted you to have hard copies of what we're really looking at as our framework and overview for our school marketing messaging timeline and vehicles, our customer experience pipeline and calendar, and then this next one is our communication timeline and methods. So as you look at these and review these hard copies that you have, I want to talk about a couple specifics on these two first uh, sheets of paper that you have in front of you, that again are very small here on the, on the slides. This really, from Fall '21 to Summer '22, really designates our recruiting and, and marketing timeline for how we go after um, our students and the experience here in KCPS. Along the bottom, you see those little icons that talk about how we deliver the messaging in which we're trying to convey. So billboards, geo-financed ads, direct mail, newspapers, organic school digital presence, radio stations, um, the search optimized digital ads we talked about last month, as well as the streaming services and commercials that we talked about last month. So I wanted you to get a clearer picture of how all of those vehicles uh, go throughout the year to support our messaging and marketing for our families. On the next um, sheet that you have, the customer experience pipeline and calendar, this is really something we wanted you to see. I feel like we talk about it in generalities, but this has specifics for you so that you can see the work we've been doing over the last year to build this framework specifically with our recruiters and that customer experience enrollment admissions team. So you see the connect and form and the apply, the red, blue, and the yellow. They're also color-coded over that September to August timeframe, so you can see when we're doing what activities and how we're proposing. We look at uh, initial applications, enrollment fairs, middle school fairs, registration, in-person tours, virtual tours. You'll really see our thought process here when we do what to secure enrollment, applications, and finally making sure that we have the welcome letter orientation and that student started on the first day of school with us in the fall. The next piece of paper that you'll see uh, talks about communication timeline and methods. Again, this is a pretty brief overview framework that we're looking at as it relates to that follow-up communication once we do secure students from enrollment to welcome events to the first day of school to count day. You'll see that we have Wednesday, September 29th as count day, and that's a really big day for us because that's when we know how many students are officially with KCPS, and we use that for reporting. So just wanted you to see this and um, get another idea of how we're looking at this process and navigating when we do which events and when we communicate with our families. All right, successes. Really wanted to highlight, this was really taken to heart by us when you gave us some feedback um, a few weeks ago. We have two recruiters, we have one currently, um, the other one has just um, left us for an opportunity, um, family-wise. But these numbers represent really fantastic work by our recruiters. And I want to highlight the number of contacts and follow-through that this team is working on. So 400 designates the number of personal calls or contacts to prospective families to offer support in completing the enrollment process. This is in addition to the work that David Rand's team does through the enrollment and admissions office. 551, number of personal family contacts by recruiters. This might mean at an event, at the follow-up phone call, an email, a text, uh, maybe through our Let's Talk application, maybe they went to our enrollment website and we saw they started the application, but we called them to help them finish the application. So that's almost, and it's over 950 contacts and personal calls from our recruiters to prospective families. 50 is the number of outreach events that our two recruiters uh, completed over the course of the 2020, 2021 school year, in a pandemic year no less. So these outreach events include poppin' at the parks, kids cafe, you can see the list here, I don't want to read them all. But again, just really looking at intentional targeted events to go to our families and bring them in to secure applications and enrollment and conversations about KCPS. Uh, one of the great stories that we have, Tenoa Foster is here tonight, Tenoa, raise your hand, say hello. Tenoa is here, Tenoa gets to go to the Hyde Park Family Movie Nights, and she's heard so many comments about, oh, my gosh, it's so great to see KCPS here. What do you have for information about the district? What can you tell us what's going on now in the district? And so it's been a great point of contact in a family-friendly environment. Uh, on, and they're on Friday nights, aren't they, Tenoa? Friday nights, she's given up her Friday nights to go to those family movie nights. So really great feedback um, from those events from our families. And then number two, district-wide events that we've hosted, for the Show Me KC Schools Virtual City Fair, 180 attendees, and then we had our first-ever virtual middle school fair this last year, in which we had 132 registered attendees come and hear about each middle school in KCPS. Successes, I hope you all, if you haven't received it in the mail, you have it on your dais, uh, the latest edition of our voice. We've had really great feedback about this edition, and what I'm really proud of about this edition is that it's very much student and voice-centered. We highlight seniors from every single one of our schools, talk about their scholarship amounts, where they're going to school, and really in their words, have them tell their own story. And again, great feedback on people wanting extra copies. Uh, the kids all got extra copies, they were excited to hand them to their friends and family, to their places of employment, I think Ms. Wolfsey said that she had feedback that one of the students wanted to share it at their place of employment this summer. So really great success in how we've been um, parlaying the magazine into social as well as other stories from the magazine. Mr. Rand, I'm going to have you come up and talk about the, this slide.
All right, thank you. And I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this. Um, we're gonna, since this is kind of a marketing update, we did want to provide some numbers, uh, but we'll also follow back up with the board with more of an enrollment update where we can dig into these numbers a lot more deeply and explain everything uh, that we did to get them. But basically, what I wanted to summarize for the board is that we heard you and that you wanted a more scientific and statistical look at what our actual count day enrollment's going to be at the end of September. And so we did that by looking at the last kind of four years of data as far as students that were with us during the school year, what were their return rates? Um, and then also looking at historically how many uh, applications we get in at various points in time. Um, and also want to draw your attention to uh, the chart on the right that uh, shows kind of leads. That was another thing that the board had indicated would like to see us kind of more um, intentional about which families we're prioritizing and reaching out to. And so of our 800 and some leads, about half of those are hot, which means they're either recent applications or we've been in contact with them recently. And then we have probably another 400 uh, offer and waitlist letters that, that would have went out yesterday. So those leads uh, will be well over 1,000. And what we're doing is we're specifically reaching out to these families that have submitted uh, maybe some initial information but haven't completed registration and are really trying to get them to come to the enrollment fair next week to go ahead and finish registration. And so with that, I would like to bring up uh, Major Stevie Brooks. Um, this is our Director of Admissions. I cannot say enough good things uh, about Major Brooks. Uh, he has great vision, uh, he's been with the district, he's a perfect example of how you can work your way up in this district. Uh, he started as a JROTC instructor, and now uh, we're very pleased to have him as our Director of Admissions. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to him, uh, so he can share kind of a brief overview of the enrollment fair and some of the highlights and what uh, you, you can expect to see uh, if you stop by. So turn that over to Major Brooks.
Well, thank you very much. First of all, I don't think I, I'm, I'm due of what he said. But anyway, I'm Major Brooks, uh, as he said, I was at JROTC, from there I was a dropout preventions uh, coordinator, now I'm the Director of Admissions. Uh, one of the things I want to share with you this, uh, we wanted, my department wanted to know is, one of the things we wanted to do with this enrollment fair, we wanted to share the district unique value perspective. And here's what we want to do, we want to share with families the multiple educational opportunities, the things that we need to bring out that we outpace others. We want to also separate ourselves from the charter schools by the many resources that we have. Let parents know, and that's what we're going to do with this fair. Uh, one of the most powerful and, and, and really simple ways to do it is tell the district's story. You saw a clip of what we're about. We want to do that with the fair. Uh, the other thing we want to do, we want to personalize enrollment by having school staff enroll students living in their boundaries. Because 90% of the time, the secretary will be the voice and the face that they will see. At this enrollment, they will see that. They'll have a ta, a chance to make that connection, as well as the school representatives giving out information about pertinent things. The other thing we want to do, we want to review the registration process for parents and students and identify opportunities to make it more user-friendly. We always hear it's too long, it doesn't do what we need, and, and it just takes too long. The other thing, we want to automate touchpoints. We want to go along the way to keep parents in mind so we can address individual needs and reduce the time and effort. And the last thing we want to use is communication to provide information with family needs, and most of all, streamline communication uh, without, without compromising individual and personal messages. Now to get to what you'll see at the, at the fair. One of the things, it will run from Monday, July 26th until June 31st. On Monday through Friday, it will be from 8:00 to 5:00. On Saturday, we will run it from 8:00 to 12:00. Okay, what we will offer is that Manual Technical Center, which is a great opportunity to highlight not only our fair, but to highlight our great uh, technical center. Uh, we will have videos, as you've seen here, that, that introduce parents to what we're about. We'll also have free uh, transportation that we will put out through communications. We'll have free refreshments. We'll We'll also have free child waiting, where this parent can have someone while they're actively going around getting things. We'll have free COVID shots for adults as well as students. We also are going to raffle off TVs, iPads for students, TVs for the parents, and we're going to give a $50 gift card each day for a scavenger hunt. And the unique thing about the scavenger hunt is they'll get an opportunity to go to all of the departments within the district and be able to understand and pick up information. As well as, we're going to go, and from there, we're going to have IT, translation, academic assessment, language services, early childhood, middle college, student support, students in transition. So our parents will get the understanding of all the resources that we can bring to bear. The thing that I found through research is, a lot of times our parents don't know the resources, we lose contact, only find out they needed to know before it happened to them. So we want to give them that opportunity. School representative will be there as well. Some of the supporting agency will have Link, will have the central legal agency there to help them, Lead to Read, and Maddy Rose and others that will be there as well. We'll do new enrollments and re-enrollments. We lost about 1,300 of our students due to the pandemic, now we're going to reconnect and ask them to come and get back with us. And at the end of, we're going to ask them for a customer survey, and we want their honest assessment, because we are building on their comments, and they're valuable to us. And at the end, we will give them a surprise for giving us their honest opinion so we can become better. And what I'd like to do before I close out this evening is invite you all to come down and observe that fair. And we'd love to have your comments, as well as for all of you out here. Please give the word out. We are K, Kansas City Public School District. We want you, we need you, we're here, and we're going to do everything we can to make you understand that we are customer-oriented, and we're changing, and we will support you. And the biggest thing, one of the things that brought me to this, I'll tell you this, 20 years ago, I served 20 years in the military, I was lost and didn't have a place where I felt I could make a difference. I came to Kansas City, was a school district, became a JROTC instructor, changed my life. I touch life every day, and I'm going to continue to do that. And like I said, what I need you to do is, the greatest communication we can have is you, by talking and letting them know that we're here and we're here to support you. And with that, I'm going to leave.
Major Brooks is always part of the following. And make sure that you had that update, though, as part of the big package on what we're doing to help recruit, retain, and secure students. And I'll leave you with one final thought. Very proud today, got an email from one of our teachers at Gladstone, Brenna Eaton, if you know Brenna. She and some of her fellow teachers are part of their recruitment team at Gladstone. They're doing knock and talks on Friday evening to go check in with their families, see how they're doing, and if they've left their school, to ask them why, and if they will come back to Gladstone next year. So again, looking at individual school recruiting and marketing in addition to the district-wide marketing. Questions, comments?
All right. Thank you, Ms. Waichel, Mr. Rand, and Major Brooks. Any questions? I have a few of my own, but I will wait. Sure, I'll go. Well, first of all, I want to go to the enrollment fair, because that was, you sold it well, sir. I don't have a question, I'm just saying like I literally want to go. So, sorry, let me. Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Wossey, sorry.
First off, I'm so proud of what you guys have just presented, between the part on the enrollment where you heard us, now seeing kind of some of the new, love this document because it's actually showing me we are getting there, you, you know, this is something you've heard us kind of harp on, and I realize we are, but enrollment, for those in the audience and those watching, yes, we're about academics, absolutely, we are about serving students academically, but the board has a fiduciary responsibility to ensure we are functioning. And enrollment drives so much of that, as we all know. So that's why we're kind of focused on this this year. But I wanted to say, I can see through Major Brooks, through what you and your team, Ms. Waichel and Mr. Rand, you guys are doing is you're getting us there. One of the things I wanted to ask about was, now that we see all the plans, like I can actually see that, I'm curious how the plans and the enrollment numbers will come together. And I know that's something in the future, but I just want to know, that's where my mind's going, like I'm starting to see everything. So I just wanted to say I appreciate that and recognize you guys for that.
Thank you.
All right. So. No, 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 I was going to ask a question, but I didn't know you had one. Go ahead, Ms. Mukner.
I'm looking at the K through 2 enrollment, and it's really quite alarming, and so I want to know if there has been something specific in this area, particularly K through 3, that we are doing to address, you know, that span.
Are you looking at slide 42, Ms. Mukner?
I'm sorry, yeah. Thirty-five. I'm sorry, my screen isn't working on here.
Yes, it says the September count, the one we have dated on, great question. So we talked a little bit about what that pre-K matriculation to kindergarten looks like, looking at the T-shirts and the marketing collateral that we're giving to families who are even interested in coming to kindergarten in KCPS, they're all getting those packages. So looking at that kindergarten, because we know if we can get them in kindergarten, we tend to keep them through the elementary experience. I think the pandemic effect on kindergarten to first and first to second has been a real challenge for us, and I will just say that upfront, I think not only in KCPS but across the country, that K1, 2 drop-off has been very real for us. So working with the principals of individual school, marketing plans, and those numbers, to make sure that we're calling all of our families, that we know that they're welcome, seeing where they've gone if they've left us, and if they didn't enroll anywhere, seeing where they are right now. So just intentional phone calls, personal phone calls, and then intentional marketing packages for every family who even has an interest as a prospective student for our district.
Thank you.
Ms. Ford?
I have a question. I know we're going to get into the RFP process later, but I wanted to know, I know when we were voting previously on the RFP, there was questions about the ability to be able to connect with communities of color, and so I'm wondering if we're able to sift through early in the process to see if we're going to be able to have that happen? And then if the RFP process has changed in any way since the last time?
Yes, so no different goals as it relates to being very focused on meeting our demographic needs, not only African-American but Hispanic population as well. So same intent there with being laser-focused on that, to make sure that they can separate demographics and segment those demographics to target them where we need to in our neighborhoods. So very much the same intent there. We do have six vendors who submitted RFQs, qualified responses, that we'll be looking at and reviewing. We do have an overlap somewhat in the team who reviewed the first set to the second set. We also have some new folks on our team that are going to be reviewing the second set of RFPs or RFQs. So looking at that way, we're using some of the same metrics to grade those responses, but again, a little bit a different team and some overlap from previous. Does that answer your question? I'm not sure. And so without talking too much about the vendors and the process before we even get there, that's what I wanted to share, I think, before we get to that process.
Mr. Markin?
Yeah, Ms. Waichel, thank you again. This is all great information, and these, as you had mentioned before, are incredible. People tell me about the positive news that they see about KCPS all the time from these magazines. My question lies around the recruiter component. I know you mentioned in cabinet or exec meetings that we've had some problems with turnover in the recruiting element. Is there anything the board can do to help in that area? Because it seems like this is a critical component to the success for bringing kids back.
You know, the recruiter position is, I think it's very specialized. It's a unique position to school districts, and so I think my job as a leader and our job as leadership team is to make sure that they feel comfortable and they feel like they're being of use and they have targeted goals, they know what they're doing. And we've really worked on that this past year and a half to make sure they have those goals, the targets, that they have their assigned schools, that they feel comfortable navigating the community, and they fit in within KCPS as well. So before they came to the marketing and communications team, they were admissions and enrollment. And I think, I don't want to speak about when I was, previous before I was here, but moving them to our team, I think there's a little bit more of a home to have that freedom to go be sales folks, and to really think about the marketing and the communications and the reputation and the, what's the word, the reputation, the brand, how we are viewed, what the perspective is about KCPS. They have a little bit more of that when they can help portray that message. We, Tenoa came to us from the admissions enrollment team, so she has great historical knowledge. When we go to our next hire of this position, I really think that as we look at those recommendations, we really want to look at bilingual, someone who can speak Spanish in addition to English to help recruit in our Hispanic communities, as well as looking at what it means to go engage at events, go engage in our neighborhoods, at our schools. And so I think that it's just a tricky position because it's unique to a school district. And so my challenge is making sure that we make them feel at home, that they have set goals, that we have ROI, and that we can prove that ROI and their worth as they bring students in collaboration with a lot of us into KCPS.
Ms. Cortez?
First, I do want to echo everybody's comments about, I really appreciate the, kind of the strategy that this reflects and the detail. I wanted to share one piece of feedback that I've gotten from parents over the course of the last probably three or four months, and just in conversations about the choices that they make and the communications, and that is, I think there's an opportunity for us, and this will tell you that I don't know the details of how to do it, to be communicating between the application time and the enrollment time. There's kind of a silent period that happens where we get a, we get a hustle a little bit by some of our competitors, just in that kind of warm hug, drip campaign-type strategy. So as you, as you start to flesh out this, I think there might be some opportunities to consider about how we stay connected to people who've applied to the district, recognizing that they may also have applied to other schools.
I think that is valid, I think that is true, and we are working on it.
Okay. I just wanted to share that, because I've heard that from quite a few families.
I appreciate that feedback. I think that from Major Brooks, to Tenoa, to Ms. Rand, we would probably echo some of that sentiment that we've heard, and that we're working on that very much, so that we've heard that and we need to correct that.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Yeah, Major, anything you want to add? I don't, I don't want to step on your toes. Come to the podium so they can hear you.
Being loud today, I was telling them to be quiet, so if I'm too loud, excuse me. One of the things that we think that will speed this up is we're going to a new student information system that will cut that enormous amount of time down, and we will be on par with the charter schools. So it won't have that lag in between, that dead time, once you put it in and be processed very quickly and a response be given back to you. One of the other things that we're doing in enrollment is, one of the things, we know where our students are leading us to go, but we don't know why, because we never had an exit interview. Now we're putting in place an exit interview that requires every parent at least give us conversation about why. So we can better ourselves to make sure that we are in fact servicing them and their needs, because we've got to know why. You know, we can enroll a lot of students in, but if they go out the back door, it's all for naught. So we want to find out, we know where they're going, we want to know why. And now we've got in place an exit interview for every parent to share that with us, and we want them to be honest, because that's the only way we can go about improving our opportunity to grow. Any questions? Yes, no?
Perfect, okay. Just a couple of quick questions, and then we'll wrap up this section. So kudos on the manual and breakthrough retention numbers, right? Those kids coming into kindergarten, that's awesome. Like, to me, that was one of the standout points tonight is, because that's where we need to grow. So thank you for pointing that out, Ms. Waichel. Two questions, so on the marketing partner RFQ, who was part of sort of that review process? And I don't need like specific names, but like what departments were part of?
Yes, we're currently reviewing those. Departments we have everywhere from central office leadership to principals, to my team, to the admissions team, enrollment team. I'm trying to think about who the email went to. So yeah, combination of district leadership, principal leadership, and then different departments within central office.
Okay, great. And then one of the things I don't see a lot of in here, and I haven't heard you mention is any sort of opportunities for improvement, barriers that stand in the way of sort of getting us down the path of increasing enrollment? Are there specific things you want to call out?
Well, I think, hopefully you kind of hear me and as we talk from month to month about what I think our barriers, opportunities, I hope we're presenting the opportunities as we go, month to month. You know, we, I don't like to talk about excuses or barriers, we need to crush through those and then keep going. One of the things, as far as a barrier, you know, as we talk about the pandemic and the effect of students who we haven't been able to locate, mobility, we're always going to have mobility, we're going to have neighborhood dynamics in KCPS, we're going to have competition in KCPS. So hopefully as we attack this plan, we're always thinking about those barriers of competition, mobility, neighborhood dynamics, and then we had the big pandemic. So I think if you're asking about barriers, I don't see barriers as it relates to budget, I don't see barriers as it relates to personnel. I think we have what we need, we just have to get after the plan. Does that suffice for the barriers?
Yeah, I think so. I just want to foster an environment in which you can bring the barriers forward, and even though you may have a plan, like discuss that plan with us so that we can provide feedback along the way, right? It's not, I don't at least view the barriers and opportunities for improvement as weaknesses or excuses, I think it's just, they exist, right? And so how do we mitigate and plan for those things that are known to us? So that's, that's all I'm saying is like, and that's not just for you and marketing, right? I think that's for the entire administration, is I want us, I want you to feel comfortable with bringing those to us and highlighting them, talk about how you're mitigating them, and then you never know, you might actually get some new ideas from this group as well. You may not, right? You may already have it all figured out, and that's cool, too. I just want to start to foster that sort of culture of, like bring those things forward and let's have a robust conversation about them. Is that fair?
Yeah, that's great, and I appreciate that. And I think as far as opportunity, you know, we're looking at this marketing partner, there's lots of opportunity there to explore, whether it's strategy, just the partnership, but we're not seeing what we're missing, I think that's a big opportunity for us that we're getting ready to embark upon.
Thank you. All right, well, I think we're ready to move on to regular business items. Dr. Collier?
All right. This evening, we have 11 business items that we're going to try to move through thoroughly, but as quickly as possible. The first of those items is the SEIU Collective Bargaining Agreement, and Ms. Quinley will be providing brief highlights of some of the changes in the process of negotiations with SEIU.
Good evening, Board, Board Chair Hogan and Deputy Superintendent Collier. Thanks for letting me have the opportunity to just real quickly give you a follow-up update. We've talked about this about a month ago. We did work with an entirely new leadership team from SEIU because their Kansas City unit in the office staff had a turnover of people, but we had a really great experience, very collaborative. We are always happy to see our employees across the table and get to hear directly from them. So this CBA represents Child Nutrition Services, Facilities and Maintenance, and Custodial. So a large number of valued and valuable employees. Not a lot of significant changes in working conditions, as you saw when you had an earlier document with some edit markup, that it was really mostly a lot of memorializing current practices, making sure we documented and continued to honor those things. Our greatest work was in compensation for these low-paid employee groups, where we worked to really push money from the bottom of the schedule up to the top, so that we are targeting, working toward that $15 an hour minimum. Every schedule in this unit, with the exception of our lowest-paid Child Nutrition Services staff, is at or above that level with this collective bargaining agreement. Our counterparts across the table were very pleased with the work on compensation, and we are as well. So we are excited and happy to bring you this agreement tonight.
Mr. Markin?
Ms. Quinley, thank you for this, and I think we've talked about some of these issues before. How many positions have we left that are under $15 an hour?
I would estimate, in this CBA for that unit, it's probably 40 to 50 out of 500 or so of the unit.
And what would it take to get us there? I mean, just as we, as a board, talk about equity and empowering our community, I mean, there's a clear, research-based position that $15 an hour minimum wage. $15 an hour minimum wage is something that rises all votes in those situations. So, um, what would it take to get there and how, how come we didn't get there already?
That's a great question. It's simple if we look at only that column of that one salary schedule. We could certainly push it there. It's 50 people. We would figure that out. How do we pay for it? But what we're trying to do is several things with our salary schedules. We want to build them to where they are sustainable long-term and that they are structured in a manner where every board, every year, it's very easy, regardless of our financial situation, for the board to be able to honor experience and give those steps on salary schedules. So we're working to redesign them for that. But if we do just that one column and push it up, since it is the lowest paid position, it drives up everything else. And so the cost becomes about twice what it would have been for us to make the move. And then we push some of those positions really high in the marketplace. And so we are trying to balance that being really responsible as the user of taxpayer dollars and fair and good to our employees at the same time. It is our plan and hope that within the next couple of years, we're able to make those strides. We want to be one of those first employers at the table, but we want to be responsible with the dollars we have as well.
Ms. Buckner?
Um, has, has this been ratified by the membership?
Yes. SEIU, as, I failed to mention that, thank you for asking. SEIU ratified on June 17th. We actually were going to bring this to you at the June meeting, but there was a little question about, um, something in their ratification process, and I just wanted to hold and make sure all was well. But I, I have confirmed and reconfirmed that they are good and we are good.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the collective bargaining agreement for SEIU?
Second.
It's been moved in second in June. Will you please call the roll?
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
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 Yes, the motion passes. Dr. Collier?
Am I on? Okay. Uh, our second item is the Matty Rhodes Center Service Agreement. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm skipping. Our second item is the Lincoln College Preparatory Academy Alumni Room naming, and we have, um, Principal Christian Foster here this evening to give us a brief overview.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Board Chair, Mr. Hogan, Deputy Superintendent, Dr. Collier, board members, and community members and audience members. As, um, Dr. Collier said, I'm Christian Foster, Principal of Lincoln College Preparatory Academy. I have here with me this evening, Ms. Nicole Perrier. She is both an alumni of Lincoln Prep and a member of the National Alumni Association. We are here this evening to present to you, um, in the hopes of being able to name our alumni room, the Lincoln High RT Coles National Alumni Room, currently located in room 108 on the first floor of Lincoln Prep. Specifically, the proposed resolution, as indicated in some of the paperwork that you all have in front of you, we submitted information to Superintendent Bedell, uh, for the schools, I'm sorry, for the board of directors to name the alumni room, number 108 at Lincoln College Prep, the Lincoln High RT Coles National Alumni Room. This official naming will bring together two rich and important histories in our Kansas City community. This is a, um, artifact picture from the RT Coles Vocational and Junior High graduation in 1938. So this is a representation of the long and rich history of Lincoln.
And like a lot of people, you probably are aware that the school was named after Abraham Lincoln, but a lot of people are not aware of the connection to RT Coles. Who is Richard Thomas Coles? Um, actually, he was born in 1859 in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. He moved here to Kansas City in 1880, and, um, at that point, um, after graduating with honors from Hampton Institute, um, and HBCU, that you may not be aware of, or maybe, and was a classmate and friend of Booker T. Washington. He taught here for six years at the Lincoln School, which was the first public school for black children here in Kansas City. After he left there, he actually opened his own school, and he became principal of the Pleasant Green School. In 1886, it was later named Garrison School. It was absorbed by the Kansas City School District because they were very impressed, um, with his ability as the first principal to introduce industrial education to elementary level with fifth grade students. And so they had that industrial education along with their academic, um, education as well. And if you're familiar with Booker T. Washington and Hampton, Hampton Institute, you know that there's a long history there of industrial education, and they felt like that was a way to educate children and get the black community jobs and uplift. And, um, he did that work until his death in 1930. Um, and in 1936, the Kansas City School Board named RT Coles Vocational Junior High School in his honor. That actually took the place of the Lincoln High School that was on about 19th and Tracy. They moved into that building. Um, the edifice that Lincoln is in now on Woodland was moved, that opened that same year. So it housed ill spots.
He also did that for 44 years. I just wanted to mention that because it's a principal for that long.
Forty-four whole years. Who does that? Um, so, um, a little more background on our working with the school. So actually, when Dr. Taylor was superintendent and formally the room was given to the Alumni Association and was used, um, it was maintained and things were put up on the wall there. We had a, a wall of, uh, fame that was there, and a lot of alumni maintained it. And so it was used for different things along the way, but beginning in the year 2018, 2019 school year, our president, uh, current president, Ron Walton, approached, um, Ms. Foster. I didn't forget your name for real. Uh, Ms. Foster, about officially naming the room, the Lincoln High RT Coles National Alumni Room. And so, um, she's worked with us amazingly over that time. Um, we've done things like been able to clear out the room. She had students come in along with the custodial class to help clear out the room. It was awesome. They were really great and really helped. Um, and they helped move some artifacts that were also found at various places by our alumni as well. Um, an actual, what we think is the original, um, portrait of Lincoln was brought up, so we have a place to house that hopefully within the alumni room, and that's our goal. And so, um, we've received a lot of support from different areas with the school. Ms. Foster has been amazing with it as well. And so the students also were able to get, um, customers, I mean, not customer service, community service hours for their work as well. So it's been a really great partnership in trying to get this to come to fruition.
And it's, we just provided you information on the process timeline in alignment with board policy FF in naming a location of a building. So just to highlight a couple of steps that we took in line with the process. In March, Mr. Walton submitted a letter to Dr. Bedell, um, a written request for this to occur. I then sent a letter to Dr. Bedell on May 6th, asking for this to be presented at, or more of a formal request to be presented to the board. We had a naming committee formed. Um, all the required people were there. We had two parents, Ms. Joyce Lynn Hernandez, also Dr. Darrell, Darrell Davis, who I would like to give a shout out to as well. He's been working with us in the, throughout the process. Two teachers, myself as principal, two community members, um, some of whom statements are included in your packet this evening, and then our sub-district board member, Mr. Nate Hogan. Public announcement was made, um, outside of the 45 days from Dr. Bedell's original announcement indicating that we want to bring this to the board, and we got engagement from additional community members as listed here. I will not read the names to you, but they are listed and their letters are provided as well. So this is what the room looked like before, uh, we started this process. Um, when I started at Lincoln four, now almost five years ago, this was where we had SAC meetings, a classroom was held in there. While we did have some artifacts in place, it definitely did not pay homage to all of the great things and accomplishments and what Lincoln really stands for. So that's what we are hoping to achieve. This is what the room looks like today, and I have to say, I've told Mr. Walton this, I've never seen, um, in, uh, construction projects take place so quickly. We have secure glass, we have museum-grade quality furniture in there, and as Ms. Perrier mentioned, we're continuing to get items from alumni from around the country that we hope to house in this space. We also hope to be able to have at least a soft open house anticipated for the current school year, so stay tuned for that. So we have the room completely secure. It's solely for the purpose of alumni, and now we just need it to be named.
So, um, Mr. Walton and members of the Lincoln Alumni Association began discussions around the naming of the room. We wanted to, um, reflect the official name of the Alumni Association. Um, and so the proposed room 108 is the Lincoln High RT Coles National Alumni Room. We really want to also keep alive that history of the RT Coles piece as well. It's not just about Lincoln. That history started with that junior high school. A lot of our alumni started there at RT Coles, our older alumni, and we want to respect that history because it is key and it is definitely a part of the school. And this room gives our students, as well as the community, an opportunity to learn about that and get that information. Um, in order to, uh, to receive community's support for this proposal, we shared with the staff, or it was shared with the staff in the March meeting, um, all of the staff members, including staff alumni, Vanita Pearson, she's, she went to school with me, um, were supportive of this name, our parent community, so with the SAC committee that was also proposed with them, and also some awesome members of the student council. James is someone that I met before COVID, so I have interacted with him, and, um, they are really excited about this, too, and they really want to know about the history of the school. So this room is definitely important to the students as well.
So we want to thank you for your time and your support of our request to officially name LCPA's Alumni Room number 108, the Lincoln High slash RT Coles National Alumni Room. And I provided a list here of the following documents, uh, that are included for you to refer to as needed. We have the initial request from Mr. Walton, um, the letter that I submitted to Dr. Bedell, the SAC agenda where it was discussed and shared with community members, and then several letters of support from distinguished members of our Kansas City community. I want to take one last moment just to say thank you and to make it a note of public record, all of the work that Mr. Ronald Walton has done to help us to arrive at this point. He's diligent through COVID, through not being able to get in the building. He has pushed through, and I just want it to be very, very well known that he has definitely been a key, key part of this process.
All, all right. Thank you, ladies. Thank you, Mr. Walton. Um, I echo Ms. Foster's comments there. Um, any questions? All right. Well, we're going to make this easy, I see. Um, can I get a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools for the board of directors to name the alumni room to the Lincoln College Preparatory Academy, or the Lincoln High RT Coles National Alumni Room?
Some moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second in June. Will you call the roll?
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes, the motion passes. All right, congratulations. That is awesome. Dr. Collier?
All right, our next business item is the Matty Rhodes Center Service Agreement. The administration requests approval of the contract for the students' support services with Matty Rhodes. The contract, which is increased by $65,713 for an additional support staff for the 2021-22 school year, will be paid from the Voca grant, which is in its final year.
Any questions? Mr. Abarka?
Yeah, I guess this is a single year approval, right? So what happens afterwards for these positions?
Yeah, Dr. Woodley, you will come forward, please.
So every year, we negotiate contracts with all of our service providers, and, um, of course, we know that we have a heightened, heightened level of need in our social and emotional support areas. We've been having contracts with Matty Rhodes for years, and we expect to continue to have those services. The Voca grant is in this final year, and we're writing a new Voca grant, um, that is due August 6th, um, with the anticipation to receive those funds continuously. Um, but we are developing a sustainability plan for all of our positions to be able to continue to provide the level of support needed.
Perfect, thank you. Just Ford?
Um, just a curiosity piece. So this program was occurring last year as well while we were virtual, that they were still providing the services?
Yes. So, um, the program with Matty Rhodes have been, um, in place, and we, you know, we've definitely used their services during the COVID pandemic. Um, however, this service agreement is a little bit differently. We're, we're really approaching the work using our data-based decision-making and identifying the need to add additional supports with, um, our Hispanic community. And so we're looking at providing two bachelor's level service coordinators to support the needs of our students and families in that area, because we're seeing a, a great need in that area.
Got it. And so we also have the data then that's showing how these services are impacting academics and improving them?
Yeah. So we have a collective impact model that I've kind of shared with the board before, that we are tracking our, um, impact of all of our service delivery models to determine what, um, what, um, service providers are effective and what service providers are not, and then making adjustments accordingly. And based on our data, that led to us reformatting this agreement to do things a little bit differently, because we saw in the data some gaps in services that needed to be adjusted.
Ms. Buckner?
What's that called? You said collective impact?
Our collective impact model, where we look at data on all of our schools, looking at the academics, the, um, behavior and attendance to determine whether or not our services that we're providing is leading to, um, impact in schools, and those are the three indicators that impact student success.
Okay, thank you.
All right, it looks like we're good. Um, is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the Matty Rhodes Center Service Agreement?
Some moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second in June. Will you call the roll?
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
I'll abstain, and just for public comment purposes, my wife serves on the board of Matty Rhodes, so I have a conflict of interest, but the motion passes.
All right, our, our next business item is the Coles Foods, uh, purchasing agreement. The administration requests approval of a DESI authorized emergency purchasing, purchasing agreement to purchase food and food supplies from Coles in an amount not to exceed $2 million. This is necessary due to the recent withdrawal of our current food vendor from the K-12 market in Missouri. The cost of food will be covered by the Child Nutrition Services Fund budget.
Any questions? Nope, looks like we're good. All right, is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to authorize the emergency justification form with Coles wholesale and for the supply and delivery of prime food and optimal community storage, not to exceed $2 million?
Some moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second in June. Will you call the roll?
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes, the motion passes.
All right, our, our next business item, this on and off, um, is the Emmanuel Family and Child Development Center pre-K cooperative agreement. The administration requests approval of the renewal and the expansion of the cooperative agreement to provide two pre-K classrooms serving up to 40 children at Emmanuel. Um, this is not to exceed the cost of $300,200 is, is included in the early childhood operating budget.
Questions? Nope, all right. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the cooperative agreement between KCPS and Emmanuel Family and Child Development Center?
Some moved.
Moved in second in June. Will you call the roll?
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey? Yes.
Yes, the motion passes. Dr. Collier?
Okay, our next item is, uh, the City Year Service Agreement. The administration requests approval of this sixth renewal of the agreement for services with City Year in an amount not to exceed $620,000. Services are provided at six schools and are funded from the operating budget, S2 funds, and Title I funds.
Any questions? All right, is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the service agreement between KCPS and City Year?
Some moved.
Moved in second in June. Will you call the roll?
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
All right, our next item is Phillips Paving Company Contract. The administration requests approval of the Central Office Parking Lot Construction Contract with Phillips Paving in the amount- with Phillips Paving in the amount of $803,937 and the use of $400,000 from the Capital Projects Fund. After two competitive bid efforts, Phillips was determined to be the lowest and best bid, although it does require additional resources from the Capital Project Fund of roughly $400,000. These funds are available in fund balance.
Any questions? Oh, Ms. Wolfsee? No? Okay. All right. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the construction contract for the parking lot at the BOE with Phillips Paving?
Some of it.
Second.
Moved in second in June. Will you call the roll?
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Yes, the motion passes.
All right. Our next item is the Insight Global Technology Staffing Agreement. The administration requests approval of a new agreement for contracted staffing purposes for technology services. The not-to-exceed contract of $1 million will provide higher-than-usual resources to buildings as we return to school full in person in the fall. The contract will be covered as a part of the ESER II use plan.
Any questions? No? All right. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation of superintendent of schools to approve the two-year agreement in the amount not to exceed $1 million with Insight Global for temporary information technology staffing?
Some of it.
Second.
Moved in second in June. Will you call the roll?
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez? Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes, the motion passes.
All right. Our next item is the ZTRIP Alternative Transportation Contract. The administration requests approval of a contract for alternative transportation with ZTRIP for the 2021-22 school year in an amount not to exceed $1,500,000. The cost of this agreement is funded in the operating budget for transportation services.
Any questions? All right. Or is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the contract, C21006, Alternative Transportation Solutions with ZTRIP?
Some of it.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second in June. Will you call the roll?
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, the motion passes.
Okay. Our next item is final amendment, I'm sorry, final amendment to the 2020-21 Children's Center for the Visually Impaired Contract. The administration requests approval of a final amendment to the contract with the center for the visually impaired for the 2020-21 school year for an increase of $198,500 to a total of $628,500. This increase became necessary as we ended the school year and entered into the summer session with a high number of students requiring services. The cost of this contract is available in the 2020-21 operating budget for special education services.
Dr. Collier, just a clarifying point. You mentioned the final amendment, but what I'm seeing here is it's the First Amendment? Is it the final?
I believe there was an amendment brought in February. I spoke with our previous Director of Special Education, and that's what she shared with me, that there was an amendment in February and then now again.
It is the final amendment? Okay.
Reflective of actual costs.
Okay. All right. Any questions? All right. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the final amendment to the Children's Center for the Visually Impaired Agreement?
Some of it.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second in June. Will you call the roll?
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes, the motion passes.
All right. And the final item, MCOR Services Fagan HVAC Contract. The administration requests approval of a contract with MCOR Services Fagan to provide HVAC enhancements at Borderstar, James, and Truce Elementary Schools to provide additional fresh air intake at each school. The cost of $869,954 is planned in the ESER II budget for the 2021-22 fiscal year.
Is there a, any questions? I just want to, sorry, just give me a sec to read this. I don't see the, um, never mind. I got it. Sorry. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the HVAC project for Borderstar, James, and Truce Elementary with MCOR Services Fagan?
Some of it.
There's a, all right. Moved in second in, that was Rita. That was Ms. Cortez.
Thank you.
Sorry. Can you call the roll?
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan? Mr. Hogan?
Yes, apologies. The motion passes. All right. Well, we got through regular business items. Let's move on to the consent items. Any questions on consent items? No? All right. Well, is there a motion to approve the consent items two through 37?
Some of it.
Second.
Moved in second in June. Will you please call the roll?
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Yes, the motion passes.